Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Good morning. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our featured pet this week is what, two-year-old male, yellow lab, found around 113, great disposition, really friendly, likes to play. Be available for adoption on Saturday at 3 o'clock at our dog kennel. Labs make a great pet. I've got one at home. I actually shaved mine so the hair doesn't end up all over me like this one, but stop by. Looks like this one will make a great pet.
I thought that was for your daughter or something. I thought that was for somebody else.
At 10 o'clock, we're going to have a public hearing on the Dell Field Ditch, lateral three, permanent county maintenance, area township, 10:15. The judges are coming from domestic relations. We go to the family court issue, and then I guess we'll do our drawings.
Okay.
Commissioner Calo to draw the winner of the dog pillow.
Right now?
Do it right here on the front.
Don't look.
Do you need an assist?
I'm not looking.
Do you need Vanna to come up and hold the pillow?
Yeah.
Vanna, Vanna, would you come up? Where'd she go?
She left.
She left!
Winner of the dog pillow is Charles Thompson. It looks a Vermillion phone number. And he also wins the yellow lab with the dog bed.
The next is Commissioner Blair to draw the winner of the replica by Centennial Bell. This is next to the last bell left. We have one more bell left for next year's fair, and then that's the end of our bell collection.
Can we make more?
We don't want to make more.
Oh, okay.
They're collectors' items. If you make more, then they're not collectors' items.
We can always make a new bell, boy.
All right. Drum roll, please. Rocky Racini, 967-6538.
Another Vermillion.
Hand over, man.
Ooh, all right. Vermillion's winning everything. Where's my names to pick from?
Well, they got the box open.
Oh, Brandy, you have it?
Yeah.
And Lori to draw the winner of the first-place glider from Solid Waste.
They wouldn't let us put our names in there.
Maybe it'll be somebody other than her. You can dig deep. Oh, they did. That's what I do. I crinkle it up. It's, we'll pick it better.
Marcia Doherty, 216. Looks like a cellphone number, so she could also be from Vermillion.
And then Mr. Cordes to draw the second place on the rocking chair.
Stand up. Stand up. You can reach better to the bottom. Mine's down the bottom.
Denise Campbell. There's no address here, so it's just a phone number. I don't know if I should give her phone number on.
No, we didn't have addresses. We just knew the 967 was Vermillion. What's it start with?
It starts with a 774.
That's Oberlin.
Wellington or Oberlin.
So it's Denise Campbell.
And then Jerry to draw the third-place winner of the chair.
How do we contact? Are we going to call her? Are you going to take her?
Yeah.
I'll pass this down to Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Madam Clerk? Can we get you to do it?
Diana Brown, and it's a 365.
Elaria. Elaria, okay.
Congratulations to all our winners. Mr. Bowman?
Thanks. Thank you, Commissioners, for the drawings and Jim. I wanted to just tell you that the single rocking chair, that took 300, approximately 348 milk jugs to make it. And the signal, or the single glider, it took 480 milk jugs. And for the love seat that Lori had drawn is 960 milk jugs. So within the structure, we're helping the economy and the environment by getting these things made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our quote for today? Didn't almost miss that. "The most important trip you may take in your life is meeting people halfway."
Let's keep that with you.
I will. That's why I got it in my packet for today. Yes, Commissioner. Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
No investments, appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as in came down the summary for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordes?
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm looking at the sheet now. I do have a number of employment issues at Job and Family Services that we need to discuss, potential new hires, and some promotional opportunities, and at Golden Acres. Plus, I want to update you on a potential real estate that I've been working, purchase of real estate I've been working on on behalf of the Board. And I also understand, I know Mr. Ennis has it, but Mr. Finigan has a matter of pending litigation that he also wants to discuss. So we would request an executive session at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting today to discuss these issues that are under the sunshine law. Thank you.
I think Scott Sarason wanted to speak with us also, didn't he?
Yes. Authorize payment of amount of $1,000 to Butler &amp; Son Funeral Service, North Royalton, for services rendered in connection with indigent veteran Richard Joseph Moore in accordance with Ohio Revice Code 5901.26.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Award contract to New Horizon Development Company, Columbia Station, amount of $4,840, which includes a 10% contingency for an Allen East shot at 337 West Lorraine Street, Oberlin, to receive grant from CDVG FY06 for water heater replacement and furnished to be paid from the home repair account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Award contract to Erie Coast Construction Vermillion in amount of $4,050, which includes a 10% contingency for Sierra Gatliff at 242 Clearmont Road, Vermillion, to receive grant assistance from CDVG FY06 for a roof replacement to be paid from the home repair account. Two quotes were received, this being the most responsive compliance specifications.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorize purchase of service agreement with Lorraine County Sheriff's Office for deputy service for state fiscal year '08, effective September 1st, 2007 through June 30, 2008, and amount not to exceed $8,430, and authorize director to execute on behalf of the Board with prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Authorized purchase of service agreement to Oberlin Early Childhood Center, Oberlin, for children's art program using Tana for fiscal year '08, effective September 1st, 2007 through June 30, 2008, at an amount not to exceed $38,475, and authorize director to execute on behalf of the Board with prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under sanitary engineer, authorize Lorraine County auditor to levy additional assessments for water line maintenance improvement against all property within various county sewer districts for the tax due clear year 2007, collectible in the year 2008 in accordance with the Ohio Revice Code 6103.15. Sewer District 53 costs $183,515.15, percent is 3%, for total $5,505.45. District 55, $580,450, 10.5%, an amount of $60,947.25. District 56, $571,647.50 at a percent of 6%, for amount of $34,298.85. District 58, $53,057.11 for 13.5%, an amount of $7,162.71. And District 59, $72,634.89 for a percent of 13.5% for an amount of $9,805.71.
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Yes, I have a-
Yeah, I was going to ask Mr. Carney to come up or jack.
We need some clarification on this. I had spoke to Jerry Ennis probably about six months ago regarding this issue. And pulling up on the Ohio Revice Code, it states that an assessment cannot be levied against a person if it's more than 10% of the original cost. I received a letter from a lady, and I've heard from certain residents that it had gone up quite a bit more than that. In order to raise that, they would have, we'd have to notify people and have public hearings and things like that before this can go further. So I called Mr. Stewart this morning to get an idea of how much the increases have gone up, and I haven't gotten that information back yet. And the lady that called me originally, I haven't been able to contact her. So I was hoping to hold this until I got more information.
Mr. Carney?
Morning.
Morning, Ken.
The resolution that needs to be passed by September 10, I believe is the deadline, is a yearly requirement. This is the same amount that was passed in 2006 and 2005. So we're asking for the same resolution to be passed.
My concern is not from last year till this year. My concern is from 2004 to 2005. I don't think it's gone up 10% from last year, but I'm wondering if it didn't go up more than 10% from 2004 till now. That's my question.
Ken? Please. Commissioner, if I might interrupt. We did, I did meet with Mr. Carney and his staff to look at that. What the statute indicates is that you have to look at the total cost of the improvement and the total sum of additional increase in these assessments that occurs cannot exceed 10% of the cost of the improvement. And we did go back and we did check those numbers to make sure that was correct. It does not limit the individual assessments per customer or resident. So that 10% limit is on the overall total amount of combined assessments that you can proceed with. We did have some lengthy discussions about this, and I believe Mr. Carney is going to take a look at this over the next couple of years. Yes. Matter of fact, it's a very complicated matter. I believe you received the chart this morning.
Yes, thank you.
Showing not only the assessments in percentages, but the resultant cost of that. And that's based on the construction cost of that water line constructed at that time. But not to get into too much detail, this was, in fact, equally raised in terms of percentage back in 2004, and it hasn't changed. What I'm recommending is that we pass this today for legal reasons, because I have a deadline. We, the Commissioners, have a deadline, I'm sorry. You own the water lines. There's 41 miles. The, and then I could report to you after that date on a more detailed proposal to possibly change the characteristics of these assessments. It boils down to is we're assessing people equally. However, the lines are not equal. There's lines built in 1929, and there's lines built in 1995. So the cost of maintaining these lines is equal to each other. It's the cost, which would be the repairs, because it's manpower plus materials as of 2007. However, some lines require more work than others. I can draw your attention to when Elaria opened their water tower, and we had approximately $35,000 to $40,000 worth of repairs on East River Road. We had 15 water line breaks in one weekend. That is in District 59, and that is within that range, is 1929 to 1960, when it was constructed. So to summarize, if I had a, you see $9,800, that's a year of income from that maintenance assessment, representing 523 customers. Prior to 2004, that was one-third that amount. That was $3,300 roughly. Now, that's $3,300 for the year. I just mentioned I spent $35,000 to $40,000 in one winter to repair those lines, one line in that district, not the whole 523 customers, just that one particular area. So you can see the situation we're in. What I'm asking is Commissioners, at this point, is pass the resolution and accept my suggestion, that I report to you in a more detailed fashion on what could be more of an equitable situation with lines of age combating with lines of newer construction. And common sense always tells us, new construction doesn't need much maintenance as the older lines. But I'd like to do a little more research on that. We, the total customers, by the way, is 3,334. And I know we have a few complaints this day, and I welcome those, maybe draw attention to the situation that we have, ancient infrastructure in terms of our water line distribution. And I'd like to study that a little more. I also want to remind the Commissioners that this is water line distribution. Elaria sells the water. We pass that water on to the customers at their request. Of these 334 customers, I would estimate, say, 98% of those were requested by petition. Those petitions had public hearings. These figures have been a result of that situation where the petition needed to be honored and water lines were constructed. Also, remind the Commissioners that these customers pay 140% of the water line, of the water usage in the city limits of Elaria. 100% Elaria, 140% for these 3,334 customers. We do not receive a nickel of that money. It goes directly to Elaria. Only money we receive to maintain 200, 215,000 linear fit of water lines is this amount of money. And the total is about $117,000. It hasn't changed since you've changed it in 2004. Prior to that, it hasn't changed for over 25 years. 2004 was the first change in over 20s.
Okay, and this breaks down, the amount of improvement is the cost per resident. So if you take sewer district number 53 with 87 customers, the amounts 5,500 bucks are looking at $60 a year roughly?
That's correct.
Right, so $5 a month to go towards maintenance of the water lines?
That's correct, on average.
Okay. That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure.
I say on average because of the mixture of these back then, could have been 1975 or 19, in that area. Back then, it was equally determined that they paid a fair proportional share of maintenance, which is a combination of possible, minimum of two items. One is the service connection, the other is the length of the line fronting the house. 500-foot property pays more than 100-foot property. But you're right, the average looks like it's about $63 per year.
Is that what it is?
Actually. And there's only 87 customers on that line. On that district, the district below it has 1,724 customers.
I mean, some of these run down to about $20 for the whole year, the whole year's maintenance, if you go down District number 59.
Yes, as a matter of fact, you mentioned the highs being 60 and the lows about 20.
Right, the low was about 20.
That's exactly right. I draw your attention to the article, or the chart that I've given you. This is not just one project, even though it has a district. And it's not a misnomer, it's always a sanitary sewer district, but it's a water line construction within that district, and those districts are there for a reason. That, I draw your attention to the number improvements, the number of improvements, the number of petitions, water lines, total 58. So it's not just six water lines, it's 58 constructions that we took over maintenance at their request by petition.
You know that I've had concerns about this for some time. The fact that a newer water line improvement costs more than an older water line improvement, and the fact that the percentage is based on the original cost of the improvement. So the people with newer water lines are essentially paying more for their assessment than those with an older water line, whose water line has more of a chance of breaking than a newer one.
Exactly.
Now, you said that you think there is a more equitable way of dispersing how these assessments should be done, and I'm wondering why you haven't brought that forward to us this time, since you know I've had these concerns.
It's a very, very detailed calculation procedure. Probably, at the end of this, I'll probably bring you probably four options.
Can you get them by next week?
No.
No.
We have 3,300. I could, no. I could probably give you a rough idea of what my intentions were, but I would, that's why I'm officially standing here before you, asking you to request me to do the study.
We don't need to pass this today. We could pass this next week, correct? Because you said we have till September 10. We have another meeting.
I believe that's correct, Mr. Ennis. September 10, I believe, is our date.
Second Monday.
Second Monday of September. Just to comment, I'm in one of these districts, I'm not sure which one, looking at the dates, and I've been paying this assessment, whatever it is, for the last 49-plus years, and I sure don't have a problem with it. I'd be happy to pay it. Takes care of the water line that's, delivers water to my home. So I don't have a problem with it.
Interesting point you brought up, Commissioner Blair. The older water lines have been paying that maintenance for 50 years. The newer water lines have not. But what's controlled is the cost to repair that line is $2,070. So 40 years ago, I could repair a broken line, $100, and now it's still about $1,200. What I'd like to do is compare this with a situation that I have presently with ditch maintenance. My ditch maintenance is determined by, not only, generally by acreage. This maintenance cost is determined by number of taps, the length of the line, and in some situations, the acreage also. Some of these water lines are on rural roads, some of these rural roads have that quote building alley type, a lot 200-foot wide, 2,400-foot long. The acreage is benefiting, and we have that charge, and that went through the public hearing process. But I'd like to refer to the ditch concept, the ditch maintenance concept, of where we have the availability of looking at the construction cost to maintain that every six years, thus giving us a period of six years, every six-year period, to reevaluate the cost of this maintenance. You're right, Commissioner Kokowski, the newer lines obviously do not need that repair. The 3% of a high number is higher than 3% of a low number. But 3% of the low number has been paid for 50 years. I'm not using you as an example, Commissioner Blair, but that's close.
Is that all going restricted accounts per sewer district? Sewer 59, all the maintenance dollars of sewer district 59 go just into an account for sewer district 59?
No, they're all combined in.
They're all combined?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the benefit is the same. The benefit is water service. It's black and white. The benefit is the water's on, the water's off. We have to repair that line, usually it's a weekend, usually it's in the winter, and the repairs are basically blown lines. As demand increases, as petitions come forth, the pressure increases, the lines are extended. It's not a positive thing, it's a continual negative thing, as well as the cost for labor and materials.
I'm not, I'm not saying that it's not a necessary evil. I'm just saying, is it equitable? Are the people involved? And I, the way I read the Ohio Revice Code is 10%, is 10%. I'd have to debate that with the prosecutor, but if you increase somebody's assessments by 10%, it looks to me that they need to be notified and have public hearings, and we, I just want it to be fair.
You're referring to what occurred in 2004? It was voted on unanimously to pass. It was voted 2005, 2006. This is 2007.
Right.
It's the same exact resolution as before.
I understand that it's the same as last year, but I don't think in 2005, when we were looking at this, that I realized at that time that it was more than 10% of what they were paying the previous year.
I may have to say that the 10% is not what you're referring to. The 10% is a limit per year of the increase. There is no increase larger than 10%.
Well, when you're looking at these different districts, District 55 is showing 10.5, 58 and 59 is showing 13.5%. That's not an overall percentage of more than 10%?
No, that was an increase of 9%. It was 4.5 prior to that.
I'm confused.
It's a very complicated matter. I'm sorry, go ahead.
What do you, total up the percentages each year, then? It was 4.5 before, this is actually a 9% increase?
What we did was, back in 2004, we recommended to do across the board, triple the assessments because they have not been increased for 25 years. There may be some small incremental ones, maybe about a half percent before I was, before I took office, but there has been increases in that area, that timeframe.
So from 2004 to 2005, we tripled their assessment?
Oh, yeah.
You could say that from 1980 to 2004, you tripled their assessment.
No.
Well, we did that in one year to catch up to the period of time. We had $39,000 income per year for a lengthy period of time. $39,000 was all we had to work with. That's 41 miles of water line, less than $1,000 per mile. One break is $1,200 minimum. We were deficit working here for a long period of time.
So back in 2004, they decided to raise those rates to make up for the cost of doing business to keep the water lines working?
That's correct.
By tripling, yeah.
Because they hadn't done it for 24 years.
But they didn't notify the people, and they didn't have any public hearings or anything, tripling their assessment. Remember, that's why I'm here. That's how I started this whole thing, is because of an assessment. So it's kind of like, you know, just a thing with me. I want to make sure that things are right and things are fair. So, did you guys have something you wanted?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Rebecca Hewitt. I live on School Street in Sheffield Township. My first question is, the way this reads, it says various county sewer districts. Well, we were part of the districts that didn't get sewers. So why are we being charged water line maintenance, number one? Dunton Road and Rolling Heights Allotment do not have sewers now because we did not pass that, or the Commissioners did not go forward with that.
Do you want to answer that first, one at a time? One question at a time?
As I may have mentioned earlier, it's a sewer district. It doesn't require a sewer to be a sewer district. Water lines-
Well, then it should be reworded. It should, you know, say all county maintained water lines or something, instead of saying sewer.
I'm sure the Ohio Revice Code don't. Ma'am, tell us how we have to do this.
You notice the title of the resolution. The title of the resolution is for water line maintenance and improvement and assessment. But by law, water lines are in sewer districts unless it's a very regi- regional facility. And they do have water districts also.
Okay. And the question about how it increased, from 1989, when our water line was put in, to 2003, I paid $55 a year, a special assessment. In 2004, it went up to $110.14. For 2005, 2006, it's $326.54. That's how much it increased. You know, I would gladly pay $50 a year or something. That's, you know, that wasn't a question, but when it jumped to $326, you know, and our taxes are going up anyway because of the new assessments, they went up already. You know, that $326 is a lot of money. My big question is, I was told everyone pays this that is on the Elaria water lines in the townships. And I know for a fact that's not true, because my neighbors that live across the street from me pay $0, no special assessment. The people on Heacock Street paid no special assessment. And I was- And I was told before by Mr. Genuzzi that these are illegal waterlines. Well, it doesn't matter if they're illegal, they're still using the county's main and the Alaria water system, they've got to be built by Alaria Water somehow, and I think it should be a flat fee for all of us. Sheffield Township is paying more than all the other four districts combined, and that adds up to a hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars, ninety-seven cents a year. And I just want to, you know, I know Mr. Carney said this all goes into one fund, but there's no accounting for that fund, and we don't see where that money is going. Anytime a waterline breaks in our area, I never see the county, it's Alaria repairing the waterlines, it's not the county. And I just, I, my big thing is why are we, why isn't everyone paying it? It should be like a flat fee. If, if they collected fifty dollars a year from everyone that lives in the township, it would probably add up to just as much, but I know there are numerous, numerous people, you know, paying, and I understand the concept that it's an old, some of them are old waterlines, but, you know, some people are paying thirty dollars, you know, I'm paying three hundred and twenty-six dollars, and I'm sure there's people that are paying more than I do. And we're just, you know, questioning that, that's because every year, you know, our taxes are going up and up, and, you know, and this is going up, and last year it was called a special assessment, this year it's called an additional assessment. You know, and it, you know, and according to Mr. Carney, this can go up by ten percent a year, is it going to be twenty percent next year? You know, and it's still legal to go up by ten percent more? I mean, my waterline maintenance is going to be more than my taxes eventually, and that doesn't make any sense to me. It's just, you know, it, it just seems like it should be a set amount for everyone to pay, and it's not right that, you know, I've got neighbors, their house is twenty-five years newer than mine, they pay zero. And I know they don't have an illegal waterline, I know they're being built by Alaria Water. I even talked to Alaria's city engineer, and he knows nothing about this, about this money being collected.
Mr. Carney?
I'd be more than happy to research that for you. Alaria said they didn't know anything about.
Yes, I talked to, I believe his name was Mu-.
Muggan-Mo.
Yes.
City engineer.
Yes, city engineer.
I'd be more than happy to research that for you. Lorraine, Alaria is the billing agent, they receive one hundred percent of the funds, that's why they're, you might see major readers and that type of situation, but they're also maintaining the hydrants, and they also maintain the service connections, that's why you see Alaria's trucks out there. They sell the water, they sell the service. We, we were requested to install the waterline.
Okay, so this is for installation, is what you're?
I'm sorry, again?
This is for installations? This money is being collected?
No, I'm, I'm referring to your statement of the, the city, of Alaria were out there repairing lines.
Yes, they always are the ones repairing.
That's right, they're repairing the service connections, they're not repairing the main lines. They may be testing hydrants or repairing the service connections, that's the small line from the house to the waterline. We maintain the main.
Okay, question for you then. We had the same main before nineteen eighty-nine, when this waterline was put in, and we switched to Alaria, we had Lorraine water, we didn't pay waterline maintenance at that time.
I'd, I'd have to research if it was installed by petition. There are some lines installed over a period of time that were granted at request of the installer, if it was a developer.
Well, it's, that's not what I'm questioning, I'm questioning why, if this is a county maintained waterline, wasn't it a county maintained waterline when Lorraine water was our water supplier?
I can research that. It was prior to your?
Prior to nineteen eighty-nine, we had Lorraine City water, and then the waterlines came in nineteen eighty-nine.
I can get that answer for you, but I won't be able to at the moment.
I mean, it doesn't make sense, all of a sudden, because we got Alaria water, not only do we have to pay for our waterline, but now we have a special assessment for ever and ever.
Alaria has a different situation. We charge for maintenance, it's conceivable that Lorraine, in their billing, has accepted that maintenance under, under their charge. Lorraine would put that in, it's called O M N R, Operation Maintenance and Repair, O M N R costs is in their billing, such billing, their water billing, so that they could possibly maintain that line. When we, when Alaria serviced the water, at that time, we took ownership, and maintenance ownership, I should say. We have agreements where cities will pay their own O M N R, be responsible for their own O M N R, and subsequently charge for that. We don't charge for anything but the assessment, that's all we have, it's just maintenance responsibility at this point. That's why, this is the only income that is available to repair those lines.
Don't we, don't, doesn't part of our taxes go, automatically go to the engineer's office though, too? Or everyone's paying taxes to go to the engineer's office? You know, I, I mean, it seems like we're, you know, these five districts are being taxed more.
The Senate Engineering Department, let me see if I can help Mr. Carney a little bit. Regardless of what, whether you want to do this, don't want to do it, Senate Engineering Department is a general fund department, fully self-supporting with the revenue that's generated from this, from the sewer district and the water district, and does not receive supplements from the county's general fund, nor does it receive tax money from residents that are non-users or non-participate, participants in any of the, the very small districts that we have. So it is, it is completely funded through the operation.
Okay. Well, I just was asking, I wanted to ask, is, did you table this till other things are, you know, found out, you know, that this is more, you know, clarified to all of us?
It's just, in the meantime, possibly, we can meet right after the meeting, and you can, and we can get together and?
Yeah, because it's, you know, it's just a lot of questions, and I just, my main question is, why isn't everyone paying? You know, I, they can't all have illegal waterlines, and I know they don't have illegal waterlines. If you have Alaria water, you should be paying it, you know, in the township. I mean, Commissioner Blair said she's been paying it for forty-nine years.
Yes, ma'am.
And obviously, she's paying a very low amount, and she's been paying it for forty-nine years, but when mine jumps from fifty dollars to three hundred and twenty-six dollars, that's, that's quite a jump. You know, for, I'm, I'm, I don't work, I, you know, I've been ill for the past two years, and my husband has had cancer last year, and he's not working, and, you know, we just see our taxes going up more and more, and it's, you know, you've just got to try to find out why, you know, where it's going. So that's, that's my big question, is why, you know, everyone's not paying it.
It's, you know, that's, it's a good question, and we need to look into it, just as taxes going up, if you look at your tax bill, the county gets a small amount.
Small sliver.
The school district gets most of it.
Right, school district and levees and so forth, so I always like to take the opportunity because, you know, we have some initiatives on the ballot, and we're struggling with economics down here. People think that when they pay their tax bill, that the county is getting this great big pool of money, and we get very, very small amount from the, from the tax bills. And I know that last year, actually, beginning five years ago, we had tremendous problems with waterlines, and some of them are pretty old, and being able to deliver services has become difficult, because there wasn't enough funds collected for decades to be able to do proper maintenance. So I think all those concerns need to be taken into consideration, and then if you talk to Mr. Carney, Ken, you and I probably need to sit down and go over this issue again. I know we talked about it a couple of years ago, and we had this incremental thing, but maybe it's time for us to revisit again, it's been a while.
Thank you, Jim, exactly what I said. I'd, I'd like to have the Commissioners request me to do a study to bring that to your attention. There could be variables that, I could present to the Commissioners and see if we have a more, a few options to this.
It's Tuesday or Wednesday, Ken, we've got till next Thursday, then we can hold it. That would give you opportunity to speak to the residents.
Does, do we get any money from the city of Alaria, since they're, nothing?
Zero.
The, you know, one of the things, Commissioner, is like our sanitary division, we don't, we don't procure, we have to procure our water from, from the municipalities, we don't have a water facility. So we're at the mercy of whoever we're able to get a contract with to be able to provide those services into those communities. So a lot of times, we're paying a premium for some of those services, and that's an unfortunate consequence of decades ago, the county not building its own facilities to be able to provide those services itself, rather than under contract.
But it seems to me that Alaria should participate in maintaining these lines, otherwise they can't sell water if the lines aren't there.
I think they made the offer, though, but that's where they got into the entire part of annexation, providing services, and it was agreements that the townships worked out with the cities to pay a higher premium to keep their townships intact. I would assume the same thing they do with sewer districts?
What I was going to recommend, to dovetail on your question, is, the city of Lorraine has O M N R in their billing. If Alaria had their O M N R in their billing, they would be maintaining these lines.
Right, that's what I'm?
They're servicing the people, they're billing the people, they're servicing the hydrants, they're servicing the water service connection.
Is there a split service, Ken? Would her area, not, would her area be split into two different services, though? She's saying some don't have a special assessment, would they still be on Lorraine water with their Operation and Maintenance and Repair bill?
There distinctly could be Alaria next to a, a, a non-Alaria resident, and has Alaria water, and they, there's no maintenance in Alaria, they may have their own, their own maintenance to control.
I, I met with the safety service directors on this a couple of years ago, and specifically with Alaria, and Commissioner Blair had some questions at that time, and I don't actually remember all of them, but I, I do remember when Eric Rothgerry was the safety service director, I talked with him and the mayor, and at that point, they really weren't interested in taking over those waterlines. They, they felt that it would be an economic drain on their department, and they didn't want to do it. So this has been an ongoing situation, and we haven't revisited it in the last year or two, to be honest with you, but we did spend an awful lot of time with it, and I specifically remember them telling me that it would actually cost more for them to be sending people out to maintain these waterlines and deal with these waterlines further out from, from the city. But we certainly can go back and talk to them again, things change.
Thank you.
Ms. Seko?
I'm here on behalf of Tim Mahalsec, trustee, he was unable to be here this morning. I did receive our waterline assessments, so I can go back and analyze them to find out who's not paying. It'd be a tedious process, but we can do that. But thank you for, for revisiting this. This has been a problem with Sheffield Township for quite a while, and we've asked, and we always get the same answer, it's, it's a difficult thing to explain, but that's not enough of an answer. So I appreciate the chance that you're going to revisit this and look at it, and some of our residents are really suffering from this increase. Thank you.
But only until next week, Pat, because we have to meet the deadline for filing the special assessments.
I have a lot of faith in everybody.
You're such a good person.
You're going to go through that list over the weekend, then, Pat?
Right.
Take that right up to the islands with you. I'll withdraw my motion.
Second. I seconded, so I'll.
Oh, okay.
Draw the second.
To place on for next week. We have to go to a public hearing, because it was scheduled at ten, some of the residents are here. There's a public hearing to place the Delfield Ditch lateral number three of Larry Township in permanent maintenance. Lorraine County Engineer by letter dated July eleventh, two thousand and seven indicated that Delfield Ditch lateral three in Larry Township has been completely used in county ditch funds, and is ready to be placed in permanent maintenance in accordance with the Ohio Ruas Code sixty-one thirty-one point sixty-three. Ditch was constructed for seventeen sublots, the ditch is three thousand three hundred and twenty linear feet in length, and total construction cost of fifty-two thousand eighty-two dollars. Maintenance collection is four hundred and ten dollars and forty-three cents per year, with seventeen parcels being assessed. This money would stay in the account through the county auditor's office, which the engineer would use for any repairs or maintenance. Once a year, the engineer's office will inspect and prepare an annual report, the maintenance fee can be collected each year, depending on the engineer's annual report. The balance in the account can add exceed twenty percent of the original cost of construction. If approved, assessment will be put on the two thousand and seven tax duplicate collectible for two thousand and eight. Resolution zero seven five thirty-seven adopted July twenty-sixth, scheduled this public hearing. Ten property owners were notified by certified mail on August ninth. One owner, Timothy A. Wodenski, did not claim, and the notice was published in the Chronicle telegram in August sixteen, two thousand and seven. Would you like to swear?
Yeah, Ms. Ennis?
Would anybody who's going to testify or comment on this stand to be sworn in?
Yes, if I can, I can, we're in solid water.
Okay, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give shall be the truth, that you shall answer unto God or in the penalty of the law of perjury?
Yes.
County engineer, have any comments?
This is a contract with Soil Conservation Service.
Good morning, Nancy.
Thank you, good morning, thanks for having me here. Delafield Ditch is on Murray Ridge Road, north of Turnpike in Alaria Township. It's approximately thirty-four hundred feet long with fourteen landowners. It was a two-phase project, it took two years to do. The first phase was completed in November two thousand and six by NML Escavating for the cost of nineteen thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-two cents. The second phase was dipping, and this was completed in May of two thousand and seven by Ari Rice, and that was for thirty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars for a total cost of forty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty cents. This project has gone very well, we've had great compliments with the landowners, which we've worked very closely on an individual basis as we approached onto their property, and I do look forward to turning this over to maintenance. Thank you.
Just a question, Mr. Chairman, the, the notice that Teresa read said there are seventeen parcels being assessed, but Nancy referred to fourteen landowners.
There's a couple of landowners that have several parcels.
Okay, thank you.
Need to close the public hearing now?
There's, there's no?
Well, nobody's swearing.
You don't need to swear in, so I don't need to be able to?
I did see residents come here, though, so.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak regarding this issue?
I'm closed.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Kala.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Skavsky.
Aye.
Need a motion to put her on permanent maintenance? So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kala.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Skavsky.
Aye. Please note the amount of the assessments, just for information sake, four hundred and ten dollars and forty-three cents per year.
About twenty-five dollars each.
Where does it say that?
I just divided it by seventeen parcels.
Okay. Thanks, sorry.
Well, you know, they're, they're on a thirty-dollar or three-dollar, depending on how many pairs they have. It's not an equal, no.
It's based on parcel size?
But it's not a lot. It's not three hundred and some dollars, like they're paying for waterlines.
I bet that's pretty good.
No, some are thirty, some are five, some are six. Do you want to do the judges now, or do you want to keep going? Judges are here.
We can do the judges now, that's fine.
Domestic relation, Judge Berta and Judge Burrows, Bud Musser.
Good morning, Judge Berta, you looked nice on TV yesterday.
Yeah, I'd like to stay off of it. I told Judge Burge and Judge Ubers, I'm going to hand the, the battalion back to them, but basically, we're not here to propose anything else, or to argue any other points, and we just came back to the Commissioners once again to ask them to reconsider that motion, the rescinding that for, to put it off for one year, and to keep it at status quo for budgetary reasons. The reason that we're doing that, I know the reason that I can speak for myself doing that, is I'm certainly, there's arguments both ways, and I understand that, and I wasn't here for the, for the implementation of family court when it was originally initiated. However, the only thing I'm requesting is to put it off in that regard for two reasons, one of which, if there's not finances to implement that, I can respect that, and that should be put off till two thousand and ten. Secondly, to avoid any appearance that it's somewhat political, because I know people are talking to me lefting and right, and it basically, you know, you have both sides, well, this is what judge would get the job, then this judge would get the job, and I don't want it to be any part of who, what judge gets what job. I know when I ran, it was the same way. You can't run against that, because this person's going to be opposed. Well, you know, I ran because I wanted to, and that's the only thing I'm saying that should happen here. People should run because they want the public position. So just to avoid that appearance, that's my main consideration. I, I bet, I can't necessarily speak for the other family court judges on that regard, but I do respect the fact that if there's not finances, after speaking with Judge Bezinski and Judge Burrows, they agreed with me that they'd be willing to table that for a year, and then revisit that issue.
Okay, Judge, we don't want to discuss the letter I got on Tuesday? That had a new option?
Oh, okay, yes. You know, Mr. Musser could speak to that. We had discussed that. I had told them to forward that on to you for part of the record, to show that it could work without funds being implemented.
Will you support the other proposal more than you... Help me out.
Okay, I'll help you out. I'm glad to help you out. Yeah, the other proposal's the one I have my name on, so I did not sign that one. So you can deduce which one I would support personally. So...
I thought you were coming back to have more discussion on this.
No, I was not. I had indicated to come back because you were potentially taking a vote on that request that we had.
Okay. I didn't do anything on that alert. You had sent originally that had the three judges signature because I thought you were going to have discussion on this.
Okay.
Because I was leaning towards the proposal that was here a week ago, and then I received this information, so I haven't done anything waiting until you...
We just proposed that because it was brought up.
Right.
When you had requested, as you would like to look at all options. But collectively, we're, for purposes of you as a board indicating the finances, we're still requesting what we originally requested as far as we're perfectly comfortable...
Putting it up till 2010, based on...
And that even the second position, we could certainly look at that in the future if in fact we have to. Or maybe by then we'll be able to implement it completely. We don't know with the finances.
Okay. Can you give me till next week then, judges? Because like I said, I didn't do anything with the other proposals until I received this.
Well, that's not fine. You know, you just forced me to wear a real suit every Thursday, as opposed to a support code that I have hanging in my office. But that's okay.
I didn't address.
Yeah, sure. That'd be fine. I appreciate your time once again, and we do. And I just, that was only my concern. I'm sure I can't speak for the other judges on the political aspect of it. Maybe I hear more of it because I'm a new judge, and maybe I hear more of it because I happen to attend a lot of functions. So, you know, that's how it works sometimes. I just want it to be out in the open a little bit more, that's all. Whatever it takes.
Any other comments? Doug or judge or judge?
Bezinski is back.
Yeah, I see him.
I see Judge Bezinski.
Any comments, Judge? I know you were on vacation last week. I didn't...
No, no. I apologize for my delay. I should have learned a long time ago. When a lawyer says it's only 10 minutes, it is only 10 minutes. I apologize.
That's okay, Judge.
Come on up. No, he's not coming up. Okay.
Okay, then, just next week I'll get back on that other letter you had sent.
Well, yeah, just contact Mr. Musser or what you need from us, or if you want us here, whatever the process is.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming.
Madam Clerk?
We'll go to number 17 on the agenda. Certified Delinquency Attorney, Sire Councilor, Lorraine County Auditor for Collection on the Tax Duplicate of the Year 2007 Collectible in O.A.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under EMA Homeland Security, approved an enter and master service agreement with Message 1, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $50,000 for five years, effective September 1, 2007, with the 30-day cancellation clause. This is for the emergency notification to the responder organizations and public entities.
So moved.
I'll second with a little explanation since this was a late add-on.
Am I to provide the explanation?
Well, I don't see anybody else.
I will. I will.
I don't see anybody else here.
Currently, currently, we pay as we do alerts. And we're rapidly reaching about $10,000 a year. So we investigated other methods that we could use that would give us more alerts and would cost a similar amount of dollars. So this company does this. We had the prosecutors look over the contracts, looked over the terms and conditions. We believe that there's more needs to be, more need to use the alert system in the future. This would give us stability in the rate for five years and also allow us to provide a better service. And this is not paid for from general fund money. Okay? So I want to point that out, that while you're the contracting authority for this, it won't come out of your general resources. I spoke with Tom Kelly, and this company is used in many areas, and we'll have a much better alert system for Lorraine County, and we'll actually have more efficiency in the expenditure of funds for the next five years.
Is this $10,000 per year then?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski.
Aye.
Under the engineering, men, resolution 07577 adopted August 9, 2007, awarding contract to KMU Trucking and Excavating, Inc., in the amount of $283,107 for Mills Road Bridge Replacement located in the cities of Avon and North Ridgeville. Said amendment is to reflect wording. County received payments of $25,000 from both cities. Local share is in the amount of $58,107. And this has been requested from Lorraine County Auditor's Office to get the certificate signed.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Approved enter and engineer service agreement with O.D. for the extension Tower Boulevard and a new alignment from Fauveau Avenue to Larry Avenue, City of Lorraine. This is in the engineering bonding plan project and authorized engineer to execute on behalf of the board with prosecutors, both of us two form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski.
Ms. Cordes, can I, Minister?
No additional comments or reports this morning, except to remind you the executive session. Thank you.
Mr. Innes, Assistant County Prosecutor.
Just to repeat that both Mr. Flanagan and Mr. Sarisim would like to have an executive session. And not that I don't like to listen to the commissioner's comments, but I have to be leaving for another meeting here. Both Mr. Sarisim and Mr. Flanagan are in the audience if you have any questions.
Fill your shoes nicely, Jerry.
And have a nice vacation. Because he won't be here the next two weeks.
We're going to miss you, Jerry.
Miss your report.
I'm sure you're going to miss us. No report today.
Mr. Bar.
A couple items, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday, Sharra Davis from the Public Service Institute emailed an independent financial evaluation proposal to the commissioners. I don't know if you had a chance to review it or not. I did. Are you interested in taking action? I am. Today?
I'd like to look at it with our legal staff, just to see where the best account is, who or how we're supposed to do that, or if it should be done independently funded.
I don't think there's any problem with the county paying for it. What are your other concerns?
That was it. I mean, that's just how it's being paid for, between $6,000, $11,000. And just like to see what's involved in the contract, exactly what they're going to provide.
Well, time is of the essence. Do you want them to review it while we're in executive session?
Well, yeah, they could. That's all I'm asking. I just saw it this morning. I just want to make sure it's...
Okay.
Fair and legal. I hate to look at a contract for five minutes and then go into approving it.
That's probably very prudent.
Okay.
Bob, you want to look at this while we're talking?
I was talking to Jerry. Would you like me to do?
I'm just asking you to review this between now and the time our executive session is over. Thank you. The next item I'd like to report on is yesterday, the West Shore Corridor. Officials had a commuter rail meeting, and there were over 50 people in attendance. And it was an excellent meeting. We talked more about how this might occur. There was an article in the Chronicle Telegram this morning. It detailed some of the discussion. It's just kind of hard to summarize all the different points that were touched upon. But one of them that stood out was one of the gentlemen that was there was from, had a successful business for over 10 years in the Boston area, and he never owned an automobile. He lived on the commuter line. There were two Cleveland councilmen there, a representative from the city of Lakewood, a couple of them, the mayor from Westlake, and a host of other people. So I, there's some issues to be decided, but I think that there's high interest in this. So we continue to plug forward. I attended last Saturday the Women's Equality Luncheon in Oberlin, and thanks to those ladies for continuing to host this luncheon, which I always find interesting. They have women speakers who are in non-traditional jobs. They had two lady architects and a woman in construction, hard hat. And one other thing that I found very interesting was the Firelands Habitat for Humanity, a person who spoke, and she also told about a restore that they have. If we have one in our area, I don't know about it, I apologize, but their restore there, they even come to your place if you are dismantling good usable houseware stuff, and they'll come in and take it out for you, and they'll take it and resell it. So I hope you can put this toll-free number up, Hal. It's 1-877-374-3487. They buy and sell good stuff, reusable stuff, and it all goes to Habitat for Humanity of the Firelands area. And there was scheduled an FSA office closing meeting for tomorrow, Friday, which Congresswoman Marcy Capter has asked to be held at a later date, postponed because she is going to rally some people together on that issue. And finally, I'd just like to say that I had fun at the fair last week. I want to thank all of our department heads and those who staffed the commissioner's tent. It was muddy and it was hot, but there were a lot of nice people that came by. And I attended the junior fair auction on one of the two days, and this is Benjamin Roberts and his bunny rabbits. I bought those. They were three little black rabbits. They were pretty cute. And then this, I gave them back to him because he loved them. And then this is Emily Teeman's, my distant cousin. So we had fun at the fair. I love the fair, and it was an excellent fair, especially thanks to the fair board for all the hard work that they do in making that available to us. Amen. And now, you asked me, and I don't, now you want me to tell you?
Farm Service Agency.
Thank you, Teresa. Farm Service Agency. See, we deal in all those acronyms, and I don't always remember what they are. I knew what it was. How come? Did you?
Yes, I did.
Oh, good.
You were reporting out.
I'm sorry. Farm Service Agency, yes. A couple of years ago, there was a little move afoot to close the Lorraine County office and consolidate it with Medina and Cuyahoga. And they rallied, especially led by Mark... Help me out, Ron.
McConnell.
Thank you. Thank you. It's Mark McConnell. And he worked very hard to bring our Lorraine County case forward. And so he's contacting everybody he can, but I think Marcy Capter hurting the loudest. And so they're going to try to rally you top-down instead of bottom-up. But they're going to do it from both ends, as I understand. Thank you.
Very nice, fair commissioner. You did a very nice job out there in spite of the weather. And I get to pick my hog up today between 3:00 and 6:00 at the fair, so I hope that one's tasty.
When is the pig roast?
Also, on Saturday, I attended, I couldn't make it out to the auction, so I had someone else bidding for me, but I made the Black River Bicentennial in downtown Lorraine. They did a very nice job with their reenactments and such, and having the actors as the original mayor and the original school people in the city. It was very nice. Nice turnout for the Palace Steak Grill. Also, I got the opportunity to cook steaks with Ben Zantarski from Lake Screen Printing and Lynn DeLuca from DeLuca's Place in the Park. Also, I don't know if Judy's still here or not. We had discussions yesterday. You want to come up, Judy? Probably easier, because you want to talk about your pops anyway. With the tragedy and all the rain and the flooding, we contacted Putnam and Hancock County based on the Recorders State Organization, looking for help. Contacted two boards of county commissioners late yesterday. Haven't had a return phone call as yet, but offering our help and assistance, saving their records. They said there'd be almost $30 million in damage in Finley alone.
Yes, I believe.
City and county buildings.
Good morning, commissioners. Geographically, Putnam and Hancock County are southwest of us. I sit on the executive board of the Recorders Association, and it was brought to our attention through emails of the terrific flooding that they had in these counties. Mr. Kayla talked, called down to Hancock yesterday. Their commissioners were not available. They were moving county offices. The awareness, I have books in our basement. Someday, we're going to hope to get them out there. But one of the Recorders' older books were damaged because of the water. And I want to thank Ken Carney. I had talked to him, the commissioners, to Mr. Cordes. The helping hand is out there to these two counties who are suffering this loss. Putnam was closed for three days. And I would like to publicly state disaster recovery. When we get some things in place, I would like to be a part of that. We think it can't happen to us, and it did happen to two of our counties. So they're back up and running. They lost all their electric. One of the Recorders was doing an email.
I think Jim did that, too.
Jim.
He did.
Did you do that?
I was just turning you down a little bit.
Am I too loud?
You're not no more.
Okay.
He shut you right off.
There you go. Just like a man.
He does that those two.
One of the Recorders was doing an email as she was doing at one of the county buildings caught on fire. So I can try to get some information back. I want to thank you all for offering your support to those counties. On a lighter note, this Saturday, September 1st, I have been privileged to be the chairperson for Kiwanis to bring the Cleveland Paps to downtown Ollie, which is a wonderful event. So this invitation is extended to everybody to please attend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kayla, did you want to talk about a recovery issue?
I'm going there. Got it here. I'm going there. We've had these discussions the past couple of years as needing a hot site for county government in case of catastrophe. We do have a backup 911 center in case we have problems. But as Recorder Nedwick was stating, the problems in Putnam and Hancock are shutting down county government, losing records, and the ability just to operate government. And I think that's something we seriously have to look at and work forward to some of the proposals that have been brought up across the years, and trying to use some of our, one of our vacant buildings to get this process going, and see if we can chase some dollars to get it done.
Well, you know, I did send around that router, and I've heard back from a couple of the commissioners on some of their thinking about using the Green Acres site out in Oberlin. It would make a tremendous recovery site, especially since the flexibility of the interior is such that the walls can be all taken out, and it can be an open area and reconfigured pretty quickly. And it has big basements in the bottom that are high, and they don't have supports in them because they were made for recreational facilities down there. And it's got wings on it, so you can operate various elements of government in each wing, and we provide us some flexibility. Plus, there's a lot of land out there, and you can easily put up a pole building to supplement any kind of operations and/or bring trailers on, because we're looking at getting into contracts with people that provide the disaster recovery to bringing in temporary space. But you need a lot of space and a lot of hookups for that, to do that. I think I sent it around just a few weeks ago. It's kind of serendipitous that I sent that to you all and recommended that we get back to looking at a backup hot site and a continuation of county government. And I was looking at that once again, because I sent you something from the State Supreme Court that said we need to provide for continuation of court activities should we incur an inability to continue on temporarily in our current location for any reason. And we really don't have any ability to do that right now. Now, that doesn't mean we have to have completely our own operation. We could probably contract with some of the cities to use their courtrooms and things like that. But as far as a hot site for all our electronics and tapes and, you know, picking up county government, we don't have that right now. And we desperately need that. And when we take old equipment out of service and we put new equipment and we should be using our old equipment as a backup. And that's what we do on 911. We revolve that equipment about every three to five years and we upgrade our backup site with our technology that's getting a little old. With that, I requested to the board to authorize me to work with the prosecutor's office again to once again go back to probate and try to change the terms and conditions of that deed restriction on that land. And I think that this may be doable because this would serve all residents of Lorraine County, children and women in the capacity of government. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me to go look to buy a facility when we have one that we may be able to use. But if we don't do something quickly with Green Acres, I'm afraid that we're gonna get past the point of being able to do anything with it because it's been closed 12 years now. And, you know, we're starting to see deterioration of the building such that we're not beyond, but it's not gonna be much, much longer. I was in there about a month ago. And I'm concerned that we need to make some final determinations on that building. And I'd like to get busy and expedite this if the board agrees to do that and start leaning towards putting a facility there for backup county government, backup electronics, hot site. A little bit different than records retention that we have at the Gates Building. But that's, has to be your pleasure.
I agree with you Jim. And we gotta look at it seriously. We can't afford to have county government shutting down. And I think if Mr. Flanagan works diligently at the probate court to get this achieved, we might be able to look at a hot site.
Our entire staff works diligently. Down the top of the list. Well, we happen to have Bob here, so it was very fortunate for us because he's been working on this. Bob, do you believe that we could, that we could do something with this and move in that direction? I know that the state has given us a little bit of leeway before on a couple of things, but this seems to make some sense for all residents and does capture the elements and essence of what the restriction entails.
We just have to request Judge Horvath to give us approval for that alternate use. No, can we do, I mean, with the pleasure of the board, can we try to get that done?
Yes.
Commissioner.
So you better make a motion if that's what you wanted to do.
I'd like to make a motion to have Mr. Flanagan pursue working on the probate court to adjust the deed restrictions on the Green Acres facility, look at it as a future hot site for Lorraine County.
So moved. Second, did you, did you make the motion?
I made the motion.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I, can I just, it's just not a hot site. We'll be looking for backup operations and continuation of services. You know, I just want, I don't want to get a resolution that kind of ties us.
Okay, yeah, let's untie it too tightly.
Right.
For operations of county government.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye, and while you're at it, you better check with Oberlin City to make sure that it fits in with their use because I think that's not zoned for that use. But they would be interested in having us do something with the building.
With all my discussions over the years with Oberlin, their concern was that we make a commitment to the building and do something with it. If we were gonna make that turn and make the commitment, then we would find a good purpose for the building and we would have to put some dollars into it. I'm not gonna mislead you. But you're right Commissioner Kayla, it was a perfect opportunity for us to see that we don't have a suitable continuation plan for county operations with the flooding that went on in some of those counties. So, I'm hoping that we can learn something from their difficulties so we don't have the same ones.
I thought the problem with that building all along since we've been in office was the amount of capital improvements that it needed just to open the doors there. I mean, where are we gonna come up with money to even do that?
Don't know Commissioner. That's a paramount question. The thing that the building needs most, if we're gonna commit to the building, is we need to get up on that roof and see, see what kind of roof work needs to be done before it starts raining in the building. We've been addressing leaks as best we can. As far as the internal part of the building, I'm not sure. Of course, it wouldn't be a building that was under constant habitation. I don't know that we would need the big, you know, changes inside. But right now, we need to stabilize that building. If we don't stabilize that building, there's not gonna be any building in another two, year or two. Specifically, the roof. If you keep the elements out and secure it that way, we'll still be able to capture that facility in a few years. The roof is the biggest concern for me right now.
Isn't that general capital improvements money though? I mean, that's things that we've looked at.
We do, but I will tell you, my most pressing concern for roofs in the next year is gonna be at the Job and Family Services building. And because that building is a single level building, there's acres of roof. I'm being sarcastic, but.
And it's flat, isn't it?
Yes, it is. And I believe that we're probably gonna be in the 800 to a million dollar range. And we don't, we're not gonna have a choice on putting a roof in it. There was a PDM roof that was put on there in 1993, maybe 94. It's already extended pretty well to its service life and we're gonna have to make that cap. We don't have a choice but to make those capital improvements because those things, bless you man. They deteriorate and we have, we have to do that. And I will tell you that the roof on this building is, is gonna be needing significant upgrading in the next two years. Walked that roof just in the last month or so. These are things that require operational dollars that are invisible to most people, but have to be accomplished. We can put them off for just so long and then we started, we start spending money on other areas repairing damage because we put off the major expenditure of the capital. So, but Job and Family Services building is probably gonna be a priority for us in the spring.
Also, I had the opportunity to speak to Captain Drozdowski about the temporary housing they've been looking at and they're asking the commissioners if we want to get a presentation from them. They enclosed a CD for us to see from a company called M-Space. They visited New York at the Ulster County Sheriff's Office, Ulster County Jail in mid-August. Facility about 15,000 square foot. I asked them for some more information on it. They've got some cost levels in here and he gave me some cost on what it would be with personnel. It's basically a bunch of trailers put together, 15,000 square feet with amenities and toilets and showers. But I told them it's something like that. If we could talk to maybe the jail standards people, maybe we could just put up our own pole barns. That's basically what it looks like, so. I'd like to meet with them next week to talk about.
I just got that in my folder and I know it's addressed for me to look at Commissioner and I'm sorry, I just haven't gotten to it yet.
It's okay. I did it yesterday. Into my report.
Move the reading be waived. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Would anybody like to speak at today's meeting?
No take.
Motion to move an executive session is outlined by the administrator and the prosecutor.
Yes, Bob has had a chance to review that proposal.
I'd still like to see an executive session go over it. I got a couple of questions with prosecutor.
Fine.
Have a second?
Second.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and as always, you are invited to attend.